This is a meeting of a county council workshop, and I think Ms. Tabernick is going to do the pledge of allegiance for us. That's what the agenda says.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was busy looking at the eagle.
I had to pull it back out.
Okay, we have online Councilman McGowan, and I don't think Councilman Passman, he's not on, is he? Okay, welcome Larry.
Hey Larry.
This was, the meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, correct?
Yes ma'am.
And we do have public comment, but it will be at the end. But you're not public comment, you're a presenter, so we really, but if the public has any comments at the end after they see the presentation, that'll be fine. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Some moves.
We have a motion by Councilman Cunningham, do we have a second? A second by Councilman Larson. Any discussion about the agenda?
No one.
If none, the agenda is approved as presented. At this time, we are going to see a presentation regarding a survey, a regional smart growth poll that was included in your package, and it was included in the things that were available to the public. Are you ready, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll just introduce yourself for the audience.
Hi, I'm Jocelyn Steiger. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Beaufort Jasper County Realtors and the Hilton Head Area Realtors. And I can say I'm really glad to be here with you all because I've been stuck dealing with a moratorium in Hilton Head, and this is much nicer to deal with right now. So, good evening, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here on behalf of the Hilton Head Area Realtors and the Beaufort Jasper County Realtors. Together, we represent over 2,000 professionals who live and work across Beaufort County, and we've long been committed to supporting local government. We've partnered with you before on things like the 2018 transportation sales tax referendum, ordinance reviews, and helping find consultants. That same spirit of partnership guided us in bringing this new resource forward. So, I do want you all to remember and keep in mind that we have multiple resources available to us through the National Association of Realtors to assist local governments in all kinds of ways. So please, anytime you're looking at something, talk to me and let me see if one of our resources matches up to you getting the data or the information you need to proceed on an issue. Through a smart growth grant from the National Association of Realtors, we commissioned a scientific countywide poll of Beaufort County voters. It was conducted by Statera Solutions, which is a nationally respected research firm. This was not an open online survey, it was a stratified representative poll of voters across all municipalities and unincorporated areas. It's the first time we've had this kind of statistically valid countywide snapshot of voter sentiment on growth, housing, and infrastructure. So, I just took out some of what I thought were the important takeaways to highlight for you. There's 61 slides to the presentation. I'm not going to do 61 slides with you, but I hope you will all take the time to go through them because they give you a lot of really good information. But let me just share some key takeaways in light of the conversation you're going to be having. Quality of life and growth is a slide six. Eighty-two percent of voters say Beaufort County's quality of life is good or excellent. This is awesome, you guys. I mean, everybody loves it here mostly. Even in the municipalities, that number was up in the ninety-some-odd percent for several of the municipalities. So overall, people think quality of life is nice here. But that optimism is fragile. As you can see on slide 10, forty-two percent say the quality of life has already gotten worse in the past three years, and forty-six expect it to decline further in the next A strong majority believe growth is happening too fast. Seventy-four percent say residential growth is moving too quickly, and fifty-five say the same about commercial growth. I think the thing you need to notice here is that seventy-four percent is the highest that they have ever gotten when they have done a poll in many different areas of the United States, many different regions. They have never gotten as high as seventy-four percent. So, that is people speaking loud and clear. Roads and infrastructure. When asked what change would most improve quality of life, the top answer by far was traffic and road improvements. Forty-four percent of voters wanted traffic and road improvements. More than half, fifty-two percent, say there is a great need for infrastructure improvements. And when you add in those who see at least some need, that number rises to ninety-two percent. When asked how to pay for it, a majority, fifty-eight percent, said if one tax had to be raised, they would prefer the sales tax over property tax. Only fifteen percent would support raising property taxes, and importantly, twenty-five percent said no tax should be raised at all. So right away, you're starting with twenty-five percent of the voters don't want anything, any kind of tax at all whatsoever. That's what you're starting with. The other number that's missing from here is there was also a question that compared what tax they wanted raised if they had impact fees, sales taxes, and property taxes. Of course, everybody went for the impact fees. But once we brought it down to just property tax versus sales tax, it was clear that sales tax was the preferred method. But no tax at all is also a preference. The voter, this shows voters are both worried about infrastructure and willing to have a conversation about how to fund it, but only if it is approached carefully. We also asked about housing shortages. Voters overwhelmingly believe there's too little housing available for key parts of our community. Sixty-nine percent say there's too little for younger people just starting out. Sixty-two percent say too little for hospitality and service workers. Fifty-four percent say too little for public service employees and healthcare workers. So ladies and gentlemen, here's the conundrum you've had forever, right? Nobody wants growth at all, but boy, we sure do need housing. And they know it. Interesting. There's your conundrum. Trust in government. Finally, one of the most striking findings is the issue of trust. While voters recognize the need for action on growth, roads, and housing, confidence in local government remains low. In fact, fifty-six percent of voters said they have only a little or no confidence in Beaufort County Council to make the right decisions about growth and development. This trust gap is significant because even when voters acknowledge a problem, like traffic or housing, they are hesitant to support solutions unless they feel confident in how government will handle them. In other words, building trust will be just as important as building roads if the county wants to move major initiatives forward. Why this matters. This poll gives us for the first time a countywide statistically valid picture of voter attitudes on growth and infrastructure. Realtors now have this data, and we're making it available to you because we believe it can help ground future discussions and decisions in credible, community-based insight. Last month, we brought in Joe Good from Statera Solutions, the research firm that conducted the poll to provide a more detailed briefing. I truly encourage you all to please watch that. It's available on your YouTube channel or your on-demand video section for Beaufort County TV. He, I cannot do what he does, and I don't pretend to do what he does. He truthfully was able to answer very good questions, talk about the validity of this statistically, and I encourage you to watch the video. Our goal is simple, to be a resource for council as you navigate these challenging issues and to continue our long history of partnership with Beaufort County. So I thank you all very much, and I don't know if I can answer a question. If I can, I'll tell you I can.
I'll offer Councilman McGowan the first opportunity. Do you have any comments or questions, Larry? Any questions?
I'm sorry, are you talking to me?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Alice?
Do you have any comments or questions for Ms. Jocelyn?
Yeah, I have one. Thanks, Jocelyn, for coming over. I was at your regional meeting, and it was extremely informative. Thanks for arranging that. It was really very beneficial. With all of the pages that are there, one that struck me the most, and I'd just like you to comment on it, was the 600 people's reaction to growth. What did they say about their position on growth? And what was the percentage of people who I believe expressed some opposition to growth, managed or otherwise?
Well, as I said, a strong majority believe growth is happening too fast. It was seventy-four percent said that residential growth is moving too quickly, and fifty-five percent said the same about commercial growth. And I think I highlighted a few minutes ago for you that that truly was the highest percentage that this firm had ever gotten as anti-growth in all of the surveys they had done in various areas.
Yeah, I specifically asked you that because I think it deserves to be repeated. It's an extremely important number for us to consider as we deal with all these upzoning requests and requests for increased density. Now, I'm sure real estate people would love to have more density, it's more homes to sell. But the reality is, everybody who lives here, or a majority, almost seventy percent, say that there's too much growth and we need to tone it down. So I think that's a very important thing for all of us to remember, and I do hope that everybody takes the time to watch the video that's there because it was extremely informative, particularly in a number of other areas that we deal with almost on a daily basis. Thanks, Jocelyn.
Yeah, with all due respect, Councilman, I do have to correct one thing. I can't leave it sitting out there. Realtors are not about density. That's not a true statement at all. Realtors are about building healthy communities. We care about schools, we care about good infrastructure, good roads, good bridges. We don't want communities that are overbuilt and overcrowded, where people are miserable. I would be remiss if I had walked away and let you think that density is what we're about. Now, we have spoken about density when it comes to affordable housing, and I think the survey showed clearly that everybody knows you need housing, and the type of housing we need, but nobody wants it, so.
Nobody wants what?
Nobody wants the housing. They know we need it, but they don't want it in their backyard.
I'll start with Councilman Dawson. Do you have any questions or comments?
No ma'am.
Okay. Vice Chair Tabernick?
Well, first, thank you and the Realtor group for doing this. I know we talked about it at the regional group, but the short packet helps everybody see county and then the different municipalities Bluffton, Beaufort. One thing that stood out for me, I looked at the best way to improve quality of life. Almost half, which is forty-four percent, said that the one change most to improve quality of life is traffic and road. And our referendum in '24 was fifty-four percent against, so this is right on target to what we had. And the one, the other disturbing one to me is slide 23, the voter's lack of trust in government, besides managing growth, just trust in Beaufort County government. Forty-five percent said always, most of the time, fifty-four percent only some, none of the time. So we obviously have some more work to do. I thought there was a lot of good information here, a lot of it for us to digest as we're discussing whether or not to have a 2026 referendum, which was the point to do, one of this, the, one of the points of this, I remember you telling us, was to give us accurate pulse of the community so we would know what people are thinking. Each of us talks to people in our areas, but this gives you just an overall view. And what I really liked was splitting it out by municipality. You could clearly see where everybody is. So to me, this is very good information, and I appreciate, I know you drove this, the whole bus, all the way, and you got the funding for it, and you pushed it, and like Mr. McGowan said, I was there, Ms. Howard was there, a couple others. This was very good information. So I appreciate you coming here today to share it.
Absolutely. And I'm always happy to help with anything I can. Our association is, our association is, is there for you to help, you know, to help you.
Councilman Bartholomew, do you have questions?
No, I still just need to honestly go back and digest some of this stuff. Haven't really had a chance to, to look that deep into it, but I appreciate you doing it.
I'll tell you, watch that video. It's great.
Yeah, that's probably what I said.
Does better than me.
Councilman Cunningham?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple. I appreciate with what you said about density. I would have to say, though, there's a lot of Realtors, you think like that. I believe a hundred percent you do because you're here all the time and you do care about the community. Just like every type of career field, though, not everybody does. Unfortunately, I mean, same thing with people in my industry. Some people are just there for the quick buck, not the success of the business longevity. So, but I love the mindset, and I hope that that continues to spread through everybody else. I guess two, two statements and a question. One to call it kind of funny, exactly what you said, people say we're growing too fast, but yet we need more houses. What's the solution? No matter what, I said this in our last county council meeting, no matter what we do, somebody's going to be mad, and then somebody's going to be happy. It's a lose-lose situation. I always tell people, they always get mad, like, stop approving new houses, stop approving new houses, stop these communities, stop all this stuff, and they yell at us all the time. You should see my emails. Best part is, we're not approving houses. It's already been approved. This has been done fifteen and twenty years ago, before most of us were even here, Town of Bluffton especially, over twenty-five years ago. So when people say they have lack of trust in the government because they continue to approve houses, my question to you is, how do we go about educating to make sure that we can educate the public that we're not approving houses, we're not improving growth? All this was approved fifteen, twenty years ago.
Yeah, and they didn't say they have a lack of trust because you're approving housing. That was not how the question was worded at all. So this was truly just trust in government on any issue. So, I've been asking councils, anyone that knows me, I have been asking councils for ten years, why do you keep saying you're for workforce and affordable housing, but yet you want to buy up density and preserve open space? And I've been asking every council I go before for the last ten years, you can't keep doing both. So, I can't help you answer that. I would say, if you need it, if you truly need the housing, then council's going to have to have a strong backbone no matter what and get it built. And know that you're going to face a whole bunch of squawkers. But you're never going to get a bunch of people to walk in this room and say, please build workforce housing, please, we really want you to build workforce housing, we support you, but you're not. That's not going to happen. So people have to, in my humble opinion, have to truly decide, do we need it? And if we need it, we're going to just have to do it. And I think if you're open and honest with the community and you explain these things to them, I don't, like you said, I don't think people realize that Hilton Head is ninety-seven point one percent developed already, like done, not under an agreement, done. Yeah, you're in the ninety percent, what in Bluffton is under development agreements. Harreville, I think they're set to have over a hundred thousand people maybe by the time they're done with what they have going on. So, yeah, everybody's growing, even though nobody wants growth, but what might be a better question is, what makes growth so bad for people? Why do they not like growth? And I would say it's traffic and congestion. And I wonder what would happen if we alleviated traffic and congestion and had good roads and bridges that could carry some of this? Would people be so upset at growth anymore? So there's more than one way to skin a cat, right? And get it. I don't know if I-
No, you're good. I was just curious your thought process. I mean, I'm not going to debate and go back and forth because we could do that for hours. I enjoy that, so no. But, well, it's, it's the truth. All of us do. If we don't, we wouldn't be in this job. I do appreciate that. No, but I do appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the information.
All right. Okay. Councilman Larson, your turn.
Again, it's always good to see this information. There was actually nothing that surprises me, even the, you know, even the confidence in county government, county officials. I guess the one thing that, the only thing that if I can say surprised me, or I thought, okay, what is it, is the one that they talked about, the one cent sales tax or the sales tax to pay for infrastructure, which is what we tried to do last year. You know, I have, and I have heard from some other municipalities now that say that they'd rather have us go back and do that, try the transportation again, because just like what we saw there, what's here, and you have twenty-five percent that are against it, those people are against it no matter what you do.
Definitely.
So, 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 you know, that's something that I, I agree with that, and when I saw that, I went, uh-huh, okay, that makes sense, because otherwise, you're right. When it comes to density and building, it's like we're a dog chasing our own tail. I've always thought, you know, I've been on council now for six years, even before that, that Jasper County was going to be the, where our affordable housing was going to end up, and that's kind of where we're going, especially if we can, they can help fix the schools out there. That's the only reason why Jasper County hasn't exploded, is because of the schools and affordable housing, or people have young kids and no one, you know, wants to go there and, or have to put their kids in a private school. So I still think that that will fix itself, once the school system is fixed out there. It doesn't mean we still can't try to do our stuff here, so. But no, again, no surprises, very informative. It's always fun to see these things and hopefully make us be better council people.
Yeah, and please, anything we can do at any time, we're happy to do with our resources, and I can go through them with, with anyone. You may be surprised what we could fund for you or help get done.
I'd just like to say thank you again. I know you worked really hard to make this happen, and I was there, and I would encourage everybody to watch the video, too.
Yeah.
And then now, next on our agenda is more discussion about the 2026 capital project sales tax referendum. And I think our administrator's going to lead that discussion, and then if any of the council members have some thoughts, you'd like, we'd like to hear them.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. We wanted to get this presentation to you all, have the opportunity to see the information, and we know that since we talked about, since we passed, council passed a resolution in June, authorizing administration to take the necessary steps to place the referendum question on the 2026 ballot, there's probably been discussion you've had in your districts and with your constituents. And so, we're getting to a point, though, if we're going to do a 2026 capital sales tax, which is what we, what you all passed previously, we need to, we're going to have to start pushing that along because we do have the calendar, I believe. Can we put that up? We do have a timeline, just to show you all where we are. But it all has to be done so that it can get on the ballot in the July timeframe. As we stated in the AIS, we have reached out to the municipalities, we've had conversations with their, with the management staff, administration staff. We also discussed this at the quarterly mayor managers meeting. We got feedback there, but what you see on, on the chart here is the timeline where if we were to move forward on the next meeting in September, there could be a referendum to establish the commission, and then you, there's- be a referendum to establish the commission, and then you, there's about a thirty-day period where we'd have to get those commission members named and identified. You all would have to vote on them, and then we would want to have the county and the municipalities develop their projects. And then you've got from March to May for the commission to go and meet with all the municipalities, take all that information, come back in May and formulate the referendum question with the project list. And then you can see there's committee and council readings, there's three readings, public hearing, and then the education campaign. So the discussion is, we just wanted to get feedback. We've got staff here, Hank, Jared, and others to discuss where, what council's thoughts are on this at this point, because we do have direction from council to continue to pursue this until we hear otherwise. So that's where we are now. So with that said, any discussion or questions you might have?
Okay, I'm going to start again with Councilman McKellen. Any thoughts?
You're on mute. Larry?
Thank you. Started out by saying, oh, lucky me. Thank you, Alice. I think that there are a number of things that probably be put together in categories. One is a list of the items that we consider to be important in the infrastructure area with a list of the ones that are priorities. I'm not sure if what we're trying to accomplish would include capital expenses. I would discourage that personally and focus more on the infrastructure. I think 170 is essential to address, 278 is essential to address. The bridges are certainly essential, and there's a great many roads that are suffering terrible damage from probably improvised explosive devices, and so many potholes around there, it's just remarkable. With regard to the Criminal Justice Center, I think there's been some back-channel discussion already not to include that because if we put that on the referendum, that would get us a big no. And it's almost a three or four hundred million, maybe by the time we get it organized, a five hundred million dollar project, and we're probably going to have to float a bond to handle that. But that is my general displeasure with putting capital expenses on there, because I think we need to find another way to, to address those. And finally, I think it's very important, if, if, if we've learned a lesson from Jasper, they had three one penny sales tax pass, so the tax is now in Jasper at nine percent. We couldn't get one of them passed, and it has a lot to do with people's belief that we've abandoned the projects from 2018 and spent the money on something else. And I think it's important for us to list those things we're going to do over and over again, and also let people know, we did not spend the money on something else, we still have it, and we're going to address the issues that were established now as priorities after all that time has passed and inflation has caused the price of doing business to go up. Reverting back to the example of Jasper, I really believe we can't rely on internal staff members to sell the program. We have to hire a group to spread the message every day leading up to that referendum. It can't be something we do in libraries around the county. We have to have them go everywhere and taper the place with important information on why this is so important. Jasper did that, and it worked to their advantage, and I think we cannot ignore hiring a professional public relations firm to be an advocate for us to address the adversaries we will come up against out there, and also convince people who never really expressed their opinion to understand how important this is so they vote positively in that referendum if we decide to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to go to you next. Councilman Larson?
And obviously, I think that I voted to put the capital penny, you know, on, on the referendum if we could, and just as Mr. McKellen said, and as we just saw in this report, I mean, I don't know if anybody else has the, has the thoughts of changing from capital back to transportation, because again, that's what I'm hearing from everybody and people that had second thoughts on, on voting for it and why they didn't vote for it last time. So again, I think we all, we're all kind of gun-shy from losing last time, so, you know, we don't want to go through that again, but that's the biggest need of the county. So not to try to change the subject from capital to something else, it's still going to be the same timeline no matter which one we do. But again, I, I think we just need to all sit back and not necessarily make a decision today, but, but make a decision if that's the direction that we, we want to go. So it's just kind of where we are right now, and, and after, you know, I've had conversations with the Town of Bluffton, and I know they feel the same way, transportation is what they think. I had another conversation with the Town of Hilton Head, and I think they, they also would rather have us go. And again, you had your meetings with them, I'm sure what, what came out of those meetings?
Very similar feedback.
That's the kind of feedback that I got. After you had your meeting, I, I kind of just, they brought it to me. So again, that's just kind of something I'm, I'm having second thoughts on.
Okay, and of course, we, we can't make any decisions today, but we just want to get opinions. Great. Okay, Councilman Logan Cunningham?
Um, yeah, one, I'm hesitant in 26 to begin with. I don't, I'm, it's midterm, so I'm a little inclined, but any off-election I don't like. We don't get a good turnout, we don't get the county to turn out, and no disrespect to some of the other people that have put out referendums, but the notorious for doing it on an off-election so they can get it through. I know that can be done, I'm just not a fan of that. I've said it before, I enjoy sleeping at night, and to me, I like being open and upfront and getting everybody voting on it and not just playing the game. So I am a little hesitant about that to begin with, that part. But let's say if I am on board and want to move forward with something along those lines, I do like the idea more of a transportation. I believe wholeheartedly, and people might disagree, without the Town of Bluffton supporting this, this is not going to pass. It's not. That's where all the growth is, is where most of the money's going to get funded to for, you figure improvements of 170 and 278, or Bluffton Parkway, or Buckwalter, whatever it might be, that's where the biggest needs are, the highest ticket items. Same as Mr. Lawson. Speaking with people at the town or the mayor, if there's not a specific list, they're not on board, and I don't blame them. They this, that, all that stuff. So we need to figure out how we can do that and best use our tools at the counties to advertise and make the community aware, because the only thing that we really had last time was an anti-tax campaign. There was no pro-transportation tax campaign that was out there whatsoever. We didn't run one, nobody else in the community did, but there were two against it. Their signs were all over the place. So I just want to, we need to start thinking about the behind the scenes of how we can actually put our people into action or what group it is in action, social media and boots on the ground to actually get that done.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bartholomew?
You know, I was, I was hesitant to vote, to even put the last one on the ballot, but I did it because I think the people do have the right to vote on it. And like you said, I'm not afraid of losing, but I prefer to win.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, my constituents were one of those groups that spent thousands of their own dollars to fight against this, and it was not a fringe group of people. It was the core of Ladies Island did not want that tax because, quite frankly, the county had not delivered, and still has not really delivered on the 2018 referendum. I don't think you'll get Ladies Island on board until you actually complete, or at least substantially complete, the 2018 items on that referendum, and I know we're working towards that. But with this, I, I, I believe this is where the education goes into this. I'm inclined to go forward with the 2026 and put it on there. I would leave it as a capital, and the reason I think the capital is because we have the waterfront, the, the Beaufort waterfront that it needs a complete revamp, we have the Broad River Fishing Pier, we have multiple other fishing piers and community centers, just our, our capital, uh, buildings and everything are, are starting to fail, but we can also use that for infrastructure as well. Is that, is that correct on that front?
Yes, transportation.
So I think we get more uses out of the capital penny, but like Logan said, I think it needs to be narrowly tailored and defined, not necessarily having a budget on there, but it needs to be clearly defined for what we're going to use it for and have a good indication and timeline to actually get it done. And that's, like I said, I'm fine to push it back to 2028. I agree with, with Logan. Um, you know, I'd rather have more people opining on it and voting on it in general, but if we need 2026 just to get it done because of the collection phase and implementation phase, I'm okay doing that, too. But I can tell you, staff doesn't need to be doing it. We do need to go outside and hire somebody to, to get out there and do that work. It's not fair to put that back on staff when they're already constrained with what they're, what they're doing right now.
Fair.
So.
All right, thank you. Vice Chairman Tabernick?
So, I mean, I agree with a lot of what was said. In 2024, it was not going to be an additional tax. It was a swap-out. Green space was going off, this would come on, it's an even-up. Now it's an additional tax. In my district, some of it's Sun City, some of it's Bluffton, Sun City passed this, ten precincts passed it, one precinct voted even-up. So there was support there, but that's because they understand the 170 debacle, I'll just say. I think the fact we haven't completed all the 2018 projects is still a rock around our neck, that some people say, we can't trust you, you didn't get them done, and yes, there were reasons, and we've said it a hundred times, I'm not sure it resonated. And they don't, when they go back to trust, which I also talked about, they don't trust that the money's still there, the way it was dedicated. So I think that's something we have to talk about. The 278 project, which was an infinity in getting to conclusion, I get it, I wasn't here for the whole thing, but we won't even have a shovel in the ground by next year. So people are going to say, I gave you a hundred and some eighty million, you haven't done that one either. I don't, I don't think until I got in here, I didn't understand how long it takes things to happen. And Jared has explained that, especially like pathways, but I'm not sure it resonates again. So I'm hesitant to go for a 26. I would go for a transportation for a limited year. I don't think people enjoyed, will enjoy hearing it's an eight-year capital penny. Eight years is a long time, and in the eight years, who knows what will even get done? And again, then you're going to face that. So if I consider anything, it would be transportation-only, limited-time, specific projects, such as 170. Ladies Island has that, you know, issue there, yeah, the Parkway. So those are big to me, and the completion of the projects is hanging over our head. And then what we just heard is the trust level. And if people say, it's not that they don't like us, they just don't trust because we didn't do the 2018 projects. How many times have we heard, where's the money? Did you spend it? Even though Pinky said it's there, Jared has said it's there, it's not, it's not being assimilated. I also agree with Logan, the mid-year is a low turnout, so a group could sway it either way. I'm not afraid of losing it either, but I just think we'd have a better chance after we deal with the 2018 projects and getting it down to a transportation tax, maybe, even then, if we put a transportation tax up, let's say four years, and I don't know how much it would generate, we're not going to get those projects done in four years either, most likely. So then when you come back for another tax, people are going to say, well, no, you didn't get those done either, because there is no understanding of how long it takes these to deal. I mean, I've learned a lot sitting on council, but the general population just says, well, what's the problem? Just go dig up 170, put the stripes, put the, you know, it just doesn't work that way. And like I said, the bridge won't be even a shovel in the ground, so that's going to be on our neck, too. So I'm really waving again, first of all, I'm, I'm moving off of capital into a possible transportation, but second of all, I'd be okay pushing it to 28.
Okay. Councilman Dawson?
Yes? Initially, when we, when we convened to discuss moving forward with the, the capital sales tax referendum, the first of the, part of the year, I, I wasn't on board, but I went along with it just for the consent, but I voiced my concerns then that because of the people that I represent and their disapproval of the 2018 projects having been completed, so they, even though it's only a penny, and we, we take a penny lightly, but our constituents don't, they, they see a penny, that's money. And when you're talking about spending money for projects that, spend their money for projects that we haven't completed, so if we, if we make a list of the 2018 projects and look at how many projects we have versus how many projects have been completed, some have been started and not completed, some have not even started as of yet, and when the people see that, the first thing they say is, you haven't, you all, they say, you all, you all haven't done anything with the 2018 project yet, and you think we're going to support another one since the old tax? It ain't going to happen. And so whether we do it in the general election or off-year, I would support moving forward with the general election, but for us to do anything prior to the next general election, I, I think is unfair with, I think we're setting ourselves up for failure, we're setting our county administrator and his staff up for failure, we're setting the county up for failure, the people, the community, whether it's out in the rural areas, St. Eleanor, Sheldon, Gardens Corner, Grays Hill, or whether it's Bluffton, Hilton Head, the people, the community is not ready for a sales tax, whether it's transportation or capital, it doesn't matter. So I, me personally, I would just push this until the next general election. That's what I would do.
Thank you, Councilman Dawson. I think I've repeated this several times, my district was, all my precincts were a hundred percent against it in 2018. I mean, not a hundred percent voters, but, you know, it, it was defeated. I think some of those signs from Ladies Island are still up in my district, too, for the anti-tax and the money that was spent, and it had a lot to do with, with, you know, just being against, against the tax. I don't know that, that my districts have a appetite, my precincts have an appetite for this, even if it was capital. I do agree with David that the downtown waterfront park would be a selling point, but we don't even know what that's going to cost at this point. And it, and to Gerald Dawson's point, it, it, it might be better to wait till the general election. You know, the school district has been successful because they've had very good estimates and timelines, and only if we can do that, I, I, I don't see it being successful at this point in an off-year, so that's my thoughts. Any other last thoughts?
I would just say the one thing we definitely need to discuss is the timeframe. I mean, I'll be open with you guys, anything over four years, I will not support, just so. Anybody that is wanting to push this forward, I'm being upfront with you guys, just letting that go, because the amount of growth, the amount of change that could happen after that, and I get the benefits of it going eight years because we don't have to worry about it, but if we do something in the lines of two to four, that does give us at least some opportunity to build back trust with the community.
Just last thing?
Yes, sir.
And this, this directly to you, Mike, you haven't been here long. You came in at a very, very rough point in this county, and I think you're doing a great job, but you've got a long ways to come, and we all do, to get trust back in this community. But we're, I mean, we're doing it, you're doing the right thing, but I said it before, we've got to have some aggressive communication with the public about the good things that we're doing. Otherwise, the negative campaigns win.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a whole lot of good going on, and it needs to get out there. And I'll leave it at that.
And I'd like to make one other point. You know, we still have a lot of money left in green space. Some, some of my constituents said, well, why wasn't green space on the ballot? And I'm like, well, because we have a lot of money for that, and I don't think, you know, we don't want to mix, mix it up unless if we do a referendum, we still have lots of money left in green space, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right, did that give, really didn't give you an answer, but we didn't. Yes, sir.
Chairwoman?
Yes.
Are there any thoughts they had for us, either Hank or Mr. Moore, something for us to chew on for the next week or so that?
Maybe Jared has some.
Or Jared, is he still back there? I'm sorry.
Jared, I'm sorry.
Somebody had a comment, too.
I'm sure he has some thoughts.
Blood, turmoil, and tears and sweat in the last referendum.
Well, he's putting his thoughts together real quick. If I could just kind of summarize what I heard there, a majority that are present here today are leaning towards 2028 v. 2026, which you understand would be a different council because of the election, and a majority seemingly leaning towards transportation tax rather than capital projects tax. For Monday, the plan was to bring forth creating the Capital Projects Commission Committee. Would you like us to also bring forth as a possible amendment in case the vote-
Would you like us to also bring forth as a possible amendment in case the vote is to go in 2026, a Transportation Sales Tax Committee Commission, where it could be amended to that and create it then, and it's a done deal? Or the option would be that when we just come back the next meeting in October with a new resolution for transportation, if council votes to go forth in '26 with the transportation?
I guess, Madam Chair, for me, just a question. As far as, and please remind me of this, could we stand up that committee early and let them go through the projects and work with staff and develop a timeline and go ahead and get it, like, could we do that early? Or does that have to be closer in proximity to when the vote's taken, like, as far as the?
In this case, because there's going to be a general election and the council will change, I would recommend not going early unless it's going to be 2026. If it's for 2028, that council should pick the commission.
And with capital, capital has to follow a specific method. Transportation does not even require a commission. You do not have to have a committee, we have done that in the past, but it is not a statutory requirement, so you can select them and put them on there yourself.
Can we let Mr. Passiman talk about?
Oh, yeah, Councilman Passiman's back, thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Passiman.
Oh, I'm just joining now, so I will catch up as we go forward.
We just talked about options 2026, 2028, capital versus transportation, and we've heard from everybody on the council except you.
Okay, so there are advantages to both of them. Yes, a capital requires that you have a group, three from Beaufort County unincorporated, and then the other three make up the municipalities, so there is input from them, which is a good thing. The other positive to a capital project is that, in fact, it does not have to be totally capital, it can have a transportation component to it. So those are the two positives. The negative to a capital is it has a defined timeline, eight years. Raising the amount of money we need in an eight-year period of time is going to be difficult to do what we need to do with the roads. You know, and I understand people think the roads are a real problem, and yes, they are. And I could see that with a capital project doing the roads, we could spend more than half of the money on one road alone, and that's 170. So transportation is wide open. We can decide the number of years, we can decide the projects that we want in there. So I'm really torn between those.
And years 2026, 2028, you have any thoughts about that?
Well, you know, the reason I'm leaning towards '26 is because it's going to get worse and more expensive in '28. And by the way, in '28, you don't start. '28 is when you literally, well, it's actually '29, you start collecting the money. So that's, that's a long time. And we desperately need to do something.
That's a good point, okay. All right, feedback?
Yeah, I just had kind of two quick comments to tell you. One, as far as the time of 2018, Brian and I are having those discussions, we'll bring that back to council, overall schedule, but just a general schedule. We will have most, a lot of the projects out to bid and under construction starting in '26. Some of them will be complete before November, a couple pathways, but most of them will not be complete before November '26. All of the projects, what we have scheduled right now preliminarily, all of the projects, with the exception of 278, will be fully complete by November 2028. The 278 project would be just getting started, go out to bid in the fall of '27, and construction to start in '28. So that's, that's the update on 2018. Other thing I had to offer is Charleston County, their sales tax failed as well in '24. What they're planning to do is go back out for a '26 transportation sales tax. In March, they put out an RFQ and have already awarded it for a Transportation Sales Tax Program Education and Engagement Plan. Also included in that was a postmortem of why the '24 failed. We're kind of getting to a year-long, so it's a little too late to do the postmortem, but I think the Realtors Association kind of gave you that postmortem information, but that's what they're doing for, as far as future engagement. If you do decide to look at '26 as far as transportation, another option to consider, which kind of is a blend of '26 and '28, is you could, everybody in the entire room said 170, you could say two years for 170. It will not be complete in two years, but it will collect the money to get the 170 project started. Then if you wanted to, you could come back with another incremental sales tax of whatever time, transportation or capital, for however many years in '28. And estimated, estimated project value is about $150 million, which is exactly what two years of collections would collect.
What are your thoughts on the years? You guys do more legwork than all of us combined, so.
I think four years, it's low, and the reason is you kind of get in the yo-yo effect, which is exactly what we're in right now with 2018. So you get the collection, but the education, we all know, is a struggle, and to educate somebody that you're not going to have the projects completed in four years is a difficult task. So if you can measure up the timeline with the implementation, and you can put in some projects that are faster-moving projects, like resurfacing or intersection improvements, but then have your big projects, whether it's 170 or whatever that might be, you can implement a 170 within eight years.
What about when we should put it out, '26, '28? Sorry, I should have clarified that better.
Well, I mean.
He probably knew, he just didn't want to answer.
Yeah. The projects aren't finished on 2018, you guys have all mentioned that. And, but as Mr. Passiman just mentioned, it's not going to get any worse. Everybody, so 170 is completely and unincorporated. It is not in, I guess it's in Hardyville partially, but it's not in Bluffton. It's really, so that is, behind the 278 bridge, that's the most, project with the most need and entirety of Beaufort County, so.
Any other questions for anyone? Thoughts, any other thoughts? Joe, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, another question, the Cooler Track. Part of that purchase with Oldfield there was a requirement at some point in time, a new EMS fire station on that property, and there was a timeline on that? How would that affect a future referendum in '28?
So the commitment inside that purchase agreement was that we had 10 years to construct an EMS center. I think we're two years into that, and so we just need access, we don't need a full road to be able to, we just have, we don't have to build a full law enforcement center, just fire rescue EMS, some emergency services station. So again, you don't have to build a $100 million project, you could build Station 39 right there on site, and that would meet that requirement.
Would that include the realignment of the road?
So the realignment of the, so we're, we have the funding right now and are moving forward on the design of realigning 170 in between the two schools, or 462, and we don't have the funding for that. So you can build interim access for driveways if you don't have that project constructed. Also, that project's fully in Jasper County, so they have funding to do road improvements on 462 from 170 up to Snake Road. So we may be designing it, but they may be a partner in actually funding that construction. And they have that money, it's just not one of their higher priority projects.
170 has an effect on everybody. I know what you're saying. 170 is in unincorporated Beaufort County, but we know for a fact that people from the north, whether they're in the city of Beaufort or other areas, for them to get to work, they have to come down 170. You see that first thing in the morning, the people in Bluffton who are coming from their 170 portion to get to 278. That's a mess there, and the truth of the matter is, it is our evacuation route, and that is of critical importance as we move forward.
Okay, any other?
I would just ask one thing, Jared. In terms of 170 timeline, you collect the money, but then what's a realistic timeline?
Yeah, it's, for a project that size, it's probably a six-year implementation between design. We would have to go through, we would federalize that project, so we would have to go through the same NEPA process. The good thing is, we're not going to incur the same wetlands, it's not in the municipality, it's unincorporated, and there's limited major, I mean, there's utilities, but, yeah, so it would be similar to a 278 scale and type of project, but the delivery would be faster, and it doesn't have bridge work, so it's a faster construction timeline too.
I'm not going to lie, I do kind of like that idea, though. That two-year, if we wanted to go for just something to get the ball rolling and build back.
Well, we did it for green space two years, and look how much was generated, you know. It's, the other thing we have no control over is Ridgeland's considering an annex in property that will impact 170 too. That's a big project, Tick, what's it called?
Ticton Hall.
Ticton Hall? And so that impacts, to Joe's point, everybody in northern Beaufort County that's trying to get into Bluffton, because Snake Road and all that will be, could be developed, so.
Will be. Will be.
And the pressure's on 170, 462, 46 as construction begins on I-95.
Yes, sir.
Well, we know, people coming from the north get off 462, and with construction of I-95, the people from the south are going to come the back way to come into this area, puts more pressure on 170.
Okay, did y'all get the input from us?
Did Hank have anything?
Does Hank have anything?
From the historic workshops that we've had, from the beginning, from talking about 2018, whether we did capital or transportation, the point has been, this is kind of a prove it phase, and that's why capital was attractive, because they're very defined, but that doesn't mean you can't have transportation that's also narrowly defined in what you do. And then the discussion that we had over the last month was the idea of maybe a short, single, or 170 plus some visible resurfacing to prove it, because it's back to the earning the trust and proving that we can do with your funds what you want us to do. And by having defined projects or defined timelines, those are the decisions for you guys to make, but at the end of the day, so you guys as elected officials, but also us as staff can prove it that we can get it done, and that helps by having adjustable size. It's great to think about 25 years and a number that I'm not going to say out loud, but it's another thing to prove it, so that there's no question to do that later.
Yeah, and it's good to know that Charleston County is doing that, contracting that out. I think that's very important, no matter what we decide to do, if we can. Okay, anything else?
If I'm hearing you right, there's no need to bring the Transportation Committee forward at next week's meeting. If it is voted to do that in '26, we can bring it through the October meeting to create the committee.
I think it's up to you, to be honest, but I do think that, especially after just hearing them, that there is discussion that maybe there is something we do in '26, it's just not what we originally discussed walking in this room to begin with.
Could be something smaller.
If you just do the 170, like Jared talked about, do the two years, you don't need a committee for that, obviously.
But should we have a committee?
But what would it be for at that point?
The committee?
Because you're not identifying projects.
That's true.
Unless we.
Resurfacing waterfront.
I was just, I was.
Waterfront, which would be a capital, to have a 170 in the waterfront. The committee is included in the one that's coming forward. The question is, do you need a backup in case the council goes transportation v. the capital?
They have two choices.
It could be just, it could be just resurfacing, that is an option as well.
You can get resurfacing done in two years.
Yes.
You can patch the Bluffton, you can do all of that in two years and show we can be accountable and efficient. 170 is not going to get done in two years, you just said it.
We have quite a few council members not here, so it would be good to have two options, you know, what Jared talked about, and then.
We can just resurrect the one that we had two years ago.
Yeah.
And bring that forth with 2026 instead of 2024.
Something similar.
I would not word it the same way.
Yeah, just word it a little different.
Yeah, I wouldn't even try to associate it with 2024 at all.
That's the template, is all I'm saying.
No, new template. Nope.
But even if you're doing resurfacing, you're going to want to name those roads specifically. They'd all be called out, and they could be spurt out throughout the community, and that's, my last job, that's how it was done, there were a number of resurfacing. And they were all named.
All named, no doubt.
Yeah.
Okay, any other business for the workshop? Councilman Dawson, he's good? Okay. All right. Those on Zoom, we're good? All right, we are adjourned, thank you very much.